For March 28th, 2022. First order of business is approve minutes. Do we have the January 10th meeting minutes to approve?
Um, I'm too late to get here, we can't.
No, January 10th it was.
Oh yeah.
The three of us. Does anybody have any discussion about these minutes as written? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, January 10th as written.
And I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Monday, February 28th, 2022. Is there any discussion regarding those minutes?
No.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, February 28th, 2022 as written.
And I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
This next one we can't do.
We can't do that one. I don't see anything in correspondence for that. I mean, there's a couple of letters from other towns that are unopened. This is saying that South Ashley is going to be doing a virtual public hearing for stormwater management by law update on April 11th. Anybody want to see it? Yeah, from the Chukidi Planning Board. They're having a public hearing Thursday, April 7th, 2022. The purpose of the hearing is to consider an application for approval of new annual all alcohol general license on premise. Okay. That was from me opening the envelope. It must've. Oh, well. You can probably go in the recycling anyway. Okay, 505. We have an A and R for Carver Street. Good, how are you doing?
Thanks.
Do we have copies?
I don't know.
No.
Uh, got them on, got them by email.
Not for her or?
Yeah, that was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, talking with Kathy, she said email her and then brought the copies along. The application, Mike has the application here. We weren't sure of the fee, so we tried to check it. Well, it was basically cutting out two parcels that would be used for a, I'm sorry, I should turn it around your way.
Yeah, you've already seen it.
So, this is part of the subdivision that was being planned and there was some conservation issues as far as the water quality and having to come up with some restricted land to meet the mitigation standards. So, this is the two parcels that will be cut off for conservation restriction purposes. Then eventually we'll come back to conservation in the planning board for the approval of the rest of the subdivision to connect back to.
You folks know where we are?
Yeah.
Muncing Ridge, the existing road is right here. Proposed is right here. Carving out this section for conservation. And this section?
This, both sides of this. Yeah, that's, those are private lots. It's this one and this one.
Okay.
Which would be the, where the loop road would come back out.
This.
Correct.
Proposal piece is that?
Right. Yep.
So, okay. What are you doing?
So, we're creating this lot.
Which is?
That's this little piece here.
Okay.
And then this lot, which is this other piece here.
Out of one.
Out of the entirety of the remaining land that will.
And this one's already cut out?
This one's not.
Well, I mean, it's, so these two are not coming from this. These are coming from all of this.
These two are coming from the entirety of the remaining land that the original subdivision came from.
Okay. And you're making these lots for the road or for just for?
They're going to be conservation restricted parcels because of the mitigation that we had to do for the crossing that was down on the original section and the crossing that we're proposing for this section. We had to come up with some mitigation.
This section meaning the stop at line.
Yes, that would be.
The existing road is right here, Muncing Ridge. So, the town of Granby is going to end up owning those.
Yes.
Great, we lose tax money.
Well, hopefully the rest of the lots will make up.
Yeah, this is the sign right here. Okay, we need.
You want to sign this one?
Two signed ones and did you give anyone a check or?
Yeah, well, yes. We weren't sure that the fee.
Oh, okay.
So, I can make it now?
Yes.
So, we're taking one and making three out of it.
Three.
So, 125 times three.
Yep. So, it's 375.
375 to the town of Green.
Uh, you want to take that or Sharpie?
I think so, I do.
You do?
So, you only need two applications?
Two signed.
Two signed, okay.
I have one.
Yeah. There are the next two here.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R for Carver Street as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Since you're standing right there, do you want to start filing?
I know your A and R guideline call for two miles.
So, what about, uh, there's the date.
Yep.
My arthritis is being crazy today. I need a pen over there. It's like going from a crayon to.
Takes longer to do the signing than the presentation. Be even worse if all five members were here.
Last one?
Yep. And Jason, then you signed since I'm already holding these this way.
You need the other one down there first. Okay, and you have?
Further check.
And the other signed one is?
It's attached to the document. Do you want to?
Want to pull it up?
Um, yes, please.
This is yours.
You don't need any paper copies?
No, we don't take any paper copies, right? Well.
Uh, no, you just need one.
Just one mile. There's one yours.
Thank you very much.
They keep all of us.
Yeah.
Yep.
Have a great day, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we're in a little bit of a dilemma for the, no, the A and R for Maximilian Drive because I have to recuse myself. We can't do it until another member comes. How about Burnett Street?
Ed was just saying anything to take some paper copies. If we keep one, we can take the other three if you just throw them out after that, it's fine with me.
No, we won't take them. I thought the last, because I thought we kept paper copies. And the last time we did, somebody said that, no, we only keep one A and R. Thank you, Ed. Ed, are you here for Burnett Street as well?
I am. That's on standby for now. That's where State Mary. It's on standby because of some title issues he's working with the owners right now, so he'll be coming sometime in the future. That's the next meeting for September. I really don't know.
It's a more meeting in April.
Okay. I'm not fully sure. He's, right now, Mr. Mayor has been privacy and that till he gets the title issues. I'm still working on a survey. I can't transfer until he gets all the title issues.
Got you.
That's just.
Okay. I don't know if you heard me while you were talking to Don, but we can't do anything with Alan.
On necessity, rule of necessity. I know, is a majority in the planning board? If there's only two members at a meeting and a majority, we have to vote in favor. Because some planning board will only allow one member to vote, or one member to sign the plan rather.
Well, I should openly state, the two lots that are here to be discussed this evening for Maximilian Drive, I have worked on both of them. And one of them, front part of March, I was in there. So, how does that work, Ken?
Um, huh. I don't think this board has ever had to, we always have that additional person.
I don't know what we can do.
I personally don't want to get myself into trouble. I don't want to get anybody into trouble.
I mean, there is the rule of necessity. Obviously, all of those disclosures would have to be filed at the city clerk, uh, town clerk's office. I mean, I guess an option would be, is hope that Nita does show up eventually.
Right.
I know that the planning board has a public hearing scheduled for 5:15, so maybe you stick around until.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we can do that. We'll step outside for a little bit.
I'll send a test to see.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll step outside and then.
Nita is, we haven't heard that Nita's not coming. I know that Jimmy's not going to be here.
Yeah, I heard earlier.
So.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
You're not to assume anymore on these meetings or?
No.
Oh, no.
No, because we haven't posted it as a virtual end year.
Okay, I was just curious because if it's virtual, they could sign back in or even Jimmy, but I know these guys are supposed to take care of first.
Well, why don't we, why don't we see, I believe Will is trying to get ahold of Nita now. We'll see if we can get her.
Sure. On a side note, that Carver, the conservation commission's already signed a deed for that. I don't know how it got signed because the plan wasn't on record, I don't know what the plan shows, but my understanding.
You want to take a look at it? It's public record.
Well, my understanding is deed is, the fee ownership is still retained by the developer and he's given up his rights to that and it still, it still should be assessed as the owner.
Oh, okay, so I spoke out of turn.
It's not, well, it should still stay in the tax rules because.
I see.
He's retaining the lot according to that deed that was signed, but he's given up the development rights and it's basically holding space.
I see.
Okay.
Okay.
But that was back in January.
Okay.
So, we'll step outside as soon as we come back in.
You can stay here where it's warmer.
Okay. Well, I'm not on time. So, everybody, you guys stay up outside downstairs?
Did she answer? Sorry, I'm not feeling very well. Still want to ask her if she's sleeping. I don't think she's got a heat map on. She's not feeling very well. Do you really need me? I don't know if I'm a sick person in here.
So, I'm just quickly looking at the rule of necessity. An elected member of a city or town board is ordinarily disqualified by the conflict of interest law for participating in a matter before the board that involves his own financial interests without of an immediate family member, et cetera. In some cases, especially when more than one member is disqualified due to a conflict of interest, an elective board cannot act because it does not have the minimum required number of members to take a vote. Under very limited circumstances, an elective board may be able to use the rule of necessity to permit the participation of the otherwise disqualified member in order to allow the board to act. The rule of necessity may be used only when it is legally necessary for an elective board to act. For example, when a statute requires an action to be taken or sets a deadline for action to be taken. The rule of necessity may not be used when a board merely has discretion to act or wants to act. The rule of necessity may be used only as a last resort. Invoking the rule of necessity does not require all previously disqualified members to participate. It merely permits their participation. In appropriate similarly limited circumstances, individual elected officials may be able to use the rule of necessity in order to carry out legally required actions that otherwise would be prohibited by the conflict of interest law.
Could you repeat that again, please?
That last?
Yes.
In appropriate similarly limited circumstances, individual elected officials such as the mayor of a municipality may be able to use the rule of necessity in order to carry out legally required actions that otherwise would be prohibited by the conflict of interest
Okay. So, we have.
You're going to tell him no statement?
Yeah, well, last resort, rule of necessity. I'm not, I'm not hearing in there because there are options. The other option is we get a sick person to come in and sign. The other option is next meeting. Or we schedule a meeting when Jim can be present, you two, and maybe Nita as well. So, there are options. Does that fall into the criteria?
That those options are presented as options to be ordered to act on this particular permit. That you could, I mean, you would invite the sick person to be that additional body to make the quorum, or you reschedule, or have this item be set at a future planning board meeting. The rule of necessity may be used only when an elective board is legally required to act on a matter and lacks enough members to take valid official action solely due to board members being disqualified by conflicts of interest in participating in the matter. Example, all five elected select board members are present at a meeting. State law requires municipalities to decide immediately whether to adopt a new municipal health plan that will cover town employees and this decision can be made only by the select board. Three select boards will be insured by the health plan. A forum of three members is necessary for a decision. The two members without conflicts do not constitute a quorum. The board cannot act. The rule of necessity may be invoked to permit all members to participate in that matter. Here's, uh, here's a planning board. The five-member elected planning board has a meeting and all members are present. Not the case there. A quorum is three members. Yes, a quorum is three members. A statute sets a deadline by which the planning board must act on a special permit and a vote by four of the five board members is necessary for an affirmative decision. This action may be taken only by the planning board. The two, two board members have conflicts. Although a forum is available, the required four votes needed for this particular matter cannot be obtained without the participation of one or both of the members with the conflicts. The rule of necessity may be invoked and all five board members may participate.
The unfortunate thing is, we're not a complete sitting board. Complete sitting board this evening.
So, if, yes, so I think the reasoning suggests that if you had a quorum, if, if a quorum is required to vote affirmatively and you had, let's say you had four members here and it was a special permit and all four members had to vote affirmatively, you could participate. But I think the way you have explained it or clarified earlier that there is the option of waiting for a quorum that would be eligible to vote because right now you're disqualified based on your, your identification that you are, have posed a conflict of interest and are going to accuse yourself. Do you want me to go get the applicant and see, talk to them about this and see?
Yes, have Kevin come in, please.
Before invoking the rule of necessity, every effort must be made to find another board or another authority in the municipality with legal power to act in the place of the elected board that could not obtain a quorum. The rule of necessity may not be invoked for mere convenience.
For mere convenience.
So, I think that's, that's.
Gentlemen, we've, uh, Ken has been enlightening us on the rule of necessity. Rule of necessity does not come into play here with myself. There are other options. The options being to schedule another meeting, wait till the next meeting, and then have the A and R plan signed. I don't believe that these two members have any difference in scheduling a meeting just for this, for that sole purpose.
We wouldn't be good with that.
Or can you wait until the, uh, this?
April 11th is the next one.
Or can you wait till April 11th?
The sooner the better on my part would be better for us, if that's possible.
We know, I'm sorry, we know if your associate is showing up?
She's ill.
She's ill, okay.
So, you won't be here.
We don't, we prefer not to have a sick person sitting next to me.
If, is it 20 days or 21 days? It's 20, 30? What's, what's, he's filed with the court or town, it's 20 days?
A and R.
At any short, at any rate, if, if, the problem comes at the next meeting and a lot of them are in the same situation, what does he do?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know, Ken, if you can look into whether or not two members will be able to vote as a majority would be sufficient because it's, it's an A and R. From access, access advantage early in the area are the things that kind of determine the planning and meets those requirements.
How, how many days does it take to get a meeting scheduled? Obviously, we'd start the time tomorrow.
You could have a meeting on Thursday if you were to post tomorrow because it's a 48 hours. It's not a, it's not a, it's just a night up on an agenda. You would have a special planning board meeting if you wanted to do that. Or you do it during the day. If you know you can corral bodies at any time, you could possibly do that.
One thing we don't know is where would we have it?
Well, we can, that could be discussed with Kathy. When we're, I'm sorry?
Who's not there yet.
Oh, who, who are we discussing with then?
Well, Kathy, I think randomly checks her emails, but Dale is there.
Oh, I mean, we could have it, we could have it here, we could have it at the police station, we could have it at the council on aging and that. Remember that little room in the back? We did a marijuana, uh, bylaw meeting?
Well, that was the COE director's office.
Oh, okay. But I mean, there are options.
Sure, we could, depending what COE's got. Yeah, we just don't have the location right, right now. That's one.
So, if we get the location and we can meet on Thursday, I mean, I can be flexible. I don't know, you don't need.
All day on Thursday.
So, I guess we got to reach out to Jim too.
How fast can you, can you touch?
To Jim?
Yeah, see if he's available Thursday.
Do I say 5:00?
Whatever's good for you folks.
Will does 5:00.
Because technically I don't have to be there.
Oh, this is true.
What about what's good for you? What time? I mean.
Whatever's good for you guys.
Okay.
Okay.
What did you say, Nita was, did you say she was in Brazil?
Ill.
Ill.
Oh, she's ill. Oh, I'm sorry. And how did you say ill? In Brazil. I'm sorry.
She probably feels the same way.
He may even let us one show off as if he's a boss.
The town's website from here, about two more flowers, with calendars says... Thursday is the 31st, and what's happening in District 2 Water Commissioners?
So that'll be at District 2.
We can go to something and see what happens.
I'd entertain a motion for a recess while we're waiting.
Okay, I'll make a motion for a ten-minute recess?
For a recess.
Just for a recess?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene the meeting after a short recess. I guess what we're gonna do is we'll have to wait to hear from the chairman as to his availability to try to meet at everyone's, well, Jason, Will, and Jim's convenience. The earlier the better. I think we understand, or everybody understands the magnitude of the necessity to get this done for you, Al.
I appreciate it.
So as soon as, I guess we'll rely on you, Jason, to hear from Jim. Start the ball rolling, and everybody will be in touch with everybody else. Is that reasonable?
No, because we need, I mean, I can do an agenda, that's my problem. I just need to know where.
Time, date, yeah, great. Okay, I apologize.
Now, is this for both the Burnett Road and Maximae?
No, just Maximae.
Burnett Road hasn't been submitted yet. It's still in the work stages.
Okay, I get it.
Actually...
They haven't for tonight, but it didn't happen.
I'd still like to know when they changed Burnett Road to Burnett Street.
I'm sorry, Burnett Street.
Oh, they did?
Yeah, all my life it was Burnett Road.
You did?
It's Burnett Street now.
That's, I thought, I think Burnett Road is Chicopee.
Yeah, well, you're a Chicopee, you're a Chicopee kid.
It sounds like Burnett Road.
Yeah, it flows, right. Okay, gentlemen, I thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully Thursday.
You know, or Bob, you let know.
Yeah, Jim, somebody will let you know, and Ed as well. Have a good evening. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close this meeting to reconvene after the public hearings.
I'll make a motion to close our regular planning board meeting and reconvene after the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Uh, can I, can I change that to close the regular planning board meeting, open the public hearing, reconvene the regular planning board, planning board meeting?
Perfect.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is 5:36. We're gonna open the, uh, the scheduled public hearings. Jason, would you like to read the?
Sure. Legal. So 5:37, in accordance with MGL Chapter 40A, Section 5 in the Granby zoning bylaw, the Granby Planning Board will hold a public hearing on March 28, 2022 at 5:15. The nature of this hearing is to present and discuss proposed amendments to the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume 3, Chapter 21, Zoning Bylaws. The subject matters of the proposed zoning bylaw amendments are as follows. Amend Section 1, Authority, Purpose, and Definitions. Section 1.2, Definitions, by adding definition. Section 5, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards. Section 5.9, 9.3, General Sitting Standards. Amending subsection A2, Lot Requirements, by adding an exemption for solar tariff generation units in prime farmland, unique farmland, and additional land of state importance. Number 2.
Excuse me, should we go one by one?
You can. I, I, I don't recall how it was done last time, because we had multiple.
I, I think, yeah, I think you went one by one. There's nothing here.
Right, right. Thank you, Jason. The, uh, we have no attendance in this matter of the, uh, the First Amendment. What the planning board had sent to the select board for their approval to allow for the public hearing, uh, we've already voted on that and approved that. I think we're good. I don't think we need to vote on anything this evening.
If the, unless the, there has been, or there is suggestion of looking at anything differently, because as you stated, the planning board did act to send a memo as written, so some of the agreements with the language were present when we sent that to the select board. But if there sits then, you know, you're thinking differently about particular articles, then you can address that here. But there is no, there's no...
Do any of the board...
The only thing I had, I'm still questioning, I questioned the last time, was taking out not having a public hearing on site plan review?
Is that number 3? Is that the Article 3, or is that for this article?
That's number 3. This is the one regarding the solar, solar in farmlands. Number 1, on the agenda.
Okay, yep. Yep, number 3 on the agenda, yes. You know, we're taking out the public hearing, and my only concern was that the public have, um, the opportunity to ask questions. What we're gonna have instead, if I understand it correctly, is just a regular board meeting. Correct?
Are, are you talking about number 3?
Yeah, enforcement?
Right, but we're only talking about number 1 right now.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. Does anybody have any, does, does any member of the board want to discuss anything with regards to number 1 on the agenda of the legal notice?
No.
No.
Okay, let's move on to number 2, Jason, if you will.
All right, number 2, amend Section 1, Authority, Purpose, and Definitions. Section 1.2, Definitions, by adding definitions. Section 3, Use Regulations, Table 1, Schedule of Uses, 3.2, Agricultural, adding 3.2.10, Private Event Venues, in Section 5, Special Use Regulations and Performance Standards, by adding Section 5.14, Private Event Venue, Establishing Standards and Criteria for Permitting.
Do any of the board members have any discussion on what we had presented to the select board?
No.
No.
Neither do I. Number 3.
Number 3, amend Section 6, Administration and Enforcement. Section 6.3, Site Plan Approval, amending subsection 6.3.2, sorry, 6.32, Application to Clarify Citation for Peer Review Services. 6.34, Procedures for Site Plan Review, to update procedures for efficiency, removing 6.36, Final Action. Renumbering Enforcement to 6.36 and adding 6.37, Appeal, with all the revisions creating a more efficient subjective site plan review process.
Okay. Do we have, does, do any of the members have any?
I do.
Okay.
Um, so...
Which one are we gonna be talking about, though?
6.34 Procedures, for Site Plan Review. Uh, we talked about this the last time, and Ken, is, is this is where, um... It says here, "A public notice to abutters and other parties of interest shall be conducted in accordance with site plan rules." Is that, am I reading that right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the proposal.
So, but somewhere along the way, it came out where, um, we don't have to have a public hearing.
So the clarification regarding that is, it's the, Chapter 48 uses the word "public hearing" for items like special permits. And currently, um, Granby adopts or uses the rules from Chapter 48 for its site plan approvals. And so, uh, for instance, some of the, um, the, uh, the work that was done on Westgate Street for Steve Marion's lot, that was a site plan approval through what, that particular process, but he had to file a special, like, for a special permit. It, it had to go through a special permit process, meaning he submitted, um, had to post the newspaper and abutters, in real, and schedule it two weeks out. So what I think the site plan process does and identifies is that site plan is an allowed use in that it's an allowed use but has, you know, the planning board oversees or the ZBA would oversee, um, a review of the development plans. But at the end of the day, it's still an allowed use in whatever zoning district it belongs in. I think that with regards to the clarification, it's the public notice requirement for a public hearing versus a meeting for the planning board, for instance. Like, you could presumably, if you had a site plan, and I'm not saying that the planning board should ever do this, but for instance, the special meeting that you're trying to schedule for this A and R, you could presumably schedule a site plan review for that. It would not be the case because you would have rules put in place to adopt, um, notice requirements to abutters. I think what I, what I was hearing from the board, from the chair, with regards to, um, separated site plan approval versus a special permit, was that the notice requirements, um, and for the newspaper was adding to the cost of the application, and, um, it doesn't need, like, it, it does not need, if the, if the town were to do that. And it would allow for, presumably, if you had the ability or wanted to, um, put it through an expedited process, you could do that. It wouldn't need to fall within the two-week requirement for posting a meeting.
So is that tied to an expedited process, huh?
Not necessarily. It's, it's about a process that the planning board would employ for site plan approval. And, you know, this is, this is something that would happen if you were to, if the town were to adopt this particular process where we would, the planning board would set some rules for itself with, for site plan approval, where you would establish the requirement for notifying abutters. You could establish a, um, quicker review by town staff versus the 35 days, I think, for a special permit.
But that's not in what we have here right now?
It's not in, yeah, it's not in here because it is a requirement that a site plan, rules and regulations be drafted.
Well, didn't, didn't, was it the chair's way of thinking that in the bylaws, the town bylaws, if something is allowed by right as written in the bylaws and in the Schedule of Uses table, then we should be able to just meet on it rather than having a public hearing on it? And the extra two weeks plus, as you just said, the 35 days for other board action?
It, yes, it could add to the, the, you're supposed to, I think it's, it's the ability of the planning board to identify that a site plan approval is an approval for an allowed use after having an initial discussion regarding that particular site development. Special permit, obviously, the town has adopted a bylaw for certain uses to have special permits for approval. And that does require more scrutiny. Um, that's why it's such a prolonged process. And so, as, as you stated, and as the board, as the board chair has stated, the planning board could have the ability to address a site plan. Obviously, there are certain components within the process of the site plan that would still need to be satisfied and addressed by the planning board if they wanted to, such as stormwater. That's very important, um, and that was a, that was something that came...
But that's all part of the bylaws, isn't it?
Yes, but that's part of the bylaws. So it, it's more the, the, there's such a specific nuance between a special permit and site plan approval, and the ability for the planning board to act on a site plan approval faster, let's say, than a special permit.
So if somebody comes in with a, a site, for a site plan approval, the board first has to decide, can we just deal with it tonight? Or does it have to?
No, it, it, no, it, it wouldn't be that because it would have to be on the planning board's agenda. You would, I, I would advise the board not to do that. But you would have to set it up as a planning board agenda. And so, um, what happens in other towns is they have a due date for materials. Like, if you want to be heard on this planning board's agenda, you know, you have those items the Friday, two weeks before the meeting, for both site plan, for mostly site plan, and you could presumably do A and R. Any, any sort of, if you want to appear before the planning board. It's really how to address the rules and regulations regarding how an applicant or a prospective applicant will address something that the planning board would have to act on. But it would be, there would be, I don't think there would be any case where someone came in with a set of plans that weren't reviewed at all that would, would be asked, you know, that, that applicant would ask the planning board to act that evening to decide on it.
Okay, so say it's on the planning board's agenda. We've got the materials ahead of time. We decide at that meeting if, if it can be approved at that meeting? Or if it needs a public hearing?
I think each one is site-specific. And you have to see what the details are, talk to the applicant, and you get the general feel of the board itself. And you, you may not sign that evening. You know, there may be other avenues that have to be investigated by the applicant, or possibly even by the planning board.
Correct.
Regarding bylaw, so it... Regarding bylaw, so it's, it's, it's only to streamlining, really get rid of the, the waiting time for the.
Public hearing.
Right. Especially since this is.
And the abutters is going to be getting notified if it's, okay, we can, you know, everything's here, we can sign it tonight. How many of us?
Because it's by right in that zone, in the bylaws.
Okay, so abutters really?
The abutters still have the ability to address issues. For instance, that property that we, that the planning board just acted on, I think, three meetings ago off State West Page Street, that was, that was a site plan approval, but the abutters did have a discussion point with the applicant to install additional or plant additional trees. So, there is a way for the abutters to participate in the process. However, you, you, because the zoning bylaw has already established a certain use that is allowed with a site plan approval, there has to be a very good reason that a planning board would not choose to deny that. And so, the reasoning by, you know, having this particular public meeting item rather than a public hearing item, is that the planning board is more apt to understand that that development will be approved at some point, but it may be still needing some additional materials from the applicant, or it really wants to hear from the police department or DPW. It's really about the process of filing and some of those notification requirements.
Okay, so neighbors, abutters?
They, they would still get notified.
How would they get notified if it just first comes in here?
You, you, the planning board, and again, this is the establishment of rules and regulations, the planning board, if they were to say, we're going to put this on the, so you submit it, you have, the, the planning board does adopt rules that say, the planning board will only hear site plan approval items if those items are submitted Friday before, the two weeks before the next planning board meeting, or the Monday, two weeks before the planning board meeting. With that application, you'd also submit abutter envelopes, or however the town currently works with abutter notifications. And you would create a notice. It wouldn't be an official public hearing notice, but it would be a notice, and you can still notify folks. And I think the addition of a town planner can, can assist the town with putting postcards together and just ensuring that the proper information is there for that type of application.
Okay, so they're notified?
They're still going to be notified. And I, and, yeah, and it really is dependent on the ability of the planning board to adopt those rules, to set in stone that.
Adopt these rules?
No, no, no. A separate set of rules that are specific to site plan approval about when and how the process plays out.
So, this is just, we're not going to make, the way you're, you're talking, we may have to make more changes after this, that's just a procedural thing?
It's, it's a procedural thing that are adopted by policies of the planning board that wouldn't require a public hearing, that wouldn't require a town meeting item to establish those rules for the planning board. This, this is a bylaw change in the zoning bylaw which would require the.
That makes more sense.
Okay.
I just don't want it to come to a point where, okay, we're not going to have a public hearing, we decided we don't need a public hearing for this, abutters have some questions. If it's a regular meeting, a planning board meeting, it's up to the chair, and he or she hopefully is having a good day and not being cranky, saying, I don't want to hear from anybody, because they can deny that. I just don't.
Well, but, I mean, the abutters, there are rules for abutters as well when it comes to the site plan approval process. Again, it, the town has adopted a bylaw that has certain uses that are allowed in certain zoning districts with a site plan approval. And it, and the site plan approval is, in reality, just to ensure conformance with underlying zoning requirements and the requirements for development, so stormwater, setbacks, those types of items to ensure that those, those, those are being met and talking about it. But at the same time, you know, informing that those, those abutters that this type of use is going to be present, you know, next to you or in the vicinity of you. The abutters are still getting notified, they still have, would have the recourse to address the board at a planning board meeting.
But they couldn't be denied at the planning board?
It would be very, the planning board would have to have a very good reason and more than likely be prepared to address any sort of legalities that may be brought up.
I think that that would be suicide, too.
I think it would be too, that you get somebody who's a chair and they're cranky. I've seen it happen in other boards where they just say, no, not taking it. So, I just want to make sure they have the ability to do that, and that seems like they will.
Okay. So, the three members present this evening are good with this number three?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess we, and this all has, just so the public knows, this all has to go before town meeting as a bylaw change, be approved at town meeting by two-thirds majority to be, to become a bylaw, just so everybody knows. So, we'll move forward and let the selectmen know?
Yep.
Will you take care of that?
Yes, I will write the planning board report.
Okay.
For that. As far as I know, and having attended the last select board meeting, I think they were looking, the, the May 8 meeting is for other town operations, but they're going to have a special in June for all bylaw changes, because I think there's some other bylaw items that are going to be coming forward. Not for the planning board, but I think some general bylaws.
Yeah, there was a bunch they didn't touch on last year, possibly.
Well, COVID really messed everything up with the meetings and the, the annual meetings and special meetings, so anything's possible.
But we're well within the timeframe, we'll prepare the planning board report.
Okay.
So, it'd be June when, when these finally come through? It would probably be June when these are brought?
I believe so. That, June 13th was a date that I heard thrown around.
And May is just for the elections and?
For, yeah.
The general budget.
Yeah.
Budgetary items, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we can close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing and continue on with our regular planning board meeting.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, we reopen the regular meeting at 6:01.
And just so you know, I did hear back from Jim, and he said Thursday night at 5:00 should work.
Okay.
Okay. I can find out if this is applicable.
Okay.
I'll let everybody know.
Okay. That's great.
No, I have.
Mr. Catalis, info?
Ed's email. He's, he's going to be with him, right?
Right.
Do you have Ed, Ed Chaplin's email?
I'm sure it's, probably it was attached to.
It's got to be attached to the emails that we got.
From Kathy.
From Kathy.
From the A and Rs.
Yeah.
And he can let Mr. Philson know.
Okay.
Do you want to do the three action items? Action to?
Sure. Can we do them?
Well, first one was Jim's, and respond to Jamie Stanton of Next Episode regarding meeting as well plans, and we know he did that, because he copied everybody.
Right.
And updates on the bylaws, submit to the select board for review, and do that, so that's completed.
Perfect. Any, any members have any more discussion?
So, there, I think there was one other item, I, because I asked Ken to list on the agenda. It was specific to the grand V MVP action grant.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Yes.
So, as you are aware, we have, the town has an MVP action grant, and that was to address incorporating items from the community resilience building workshop that was done a couple years ago into the master plan, as well as looking at regulatory items and presenting that to the planning board. And so, not, not necessarily being the project manager on the PVPC side for this, I am aware that staff is prepared to address the planning board at a future meeting, and I'm wondering whether or not a meeting, either the first meeting in April or the second meeting in April, that those items are presented to the board. I would suggest the regulatory items maybe be presented to the board for the first meeting, and maybe the master plan items to be addressed in the second April meeting. And again, the master plan items are to incorporate the results and some of the findings that were made from the community billion, community resilience building workshop, along with work by the town committee that was looking at those items. But that would be, you know, a suggestion so that the board will act however they want to on those items. It will be a recommendation of bylaws and a recommendation to adopt changes to the master plan.
So, if they're going to recommend changes, bylaw changes, those won't be until next year? Is that still?
Possibly, presumably. I, I, I don't think it necessarily, again, you know, because the, the grant is until June, I think that's understanding that sometimes the timing works all right, sometimes it doesn't. But the presentation of the regulations or the regulatory items can be something that the planning board puts in its work plan for the new, you know, once the new board is sitting. And, or, you know, if it happens to be something that the planning board wants to act on, obviously, it, we, we could possibly even schedule another public hearing before the June meeting if the planning board wanted to include another article on the June.
And it'll be any time to absorb?
Yeah, any time to absorb, and that's the thing. But some boards are different, you know, every board is different. But the regulations are the ones that came from the community billion resilience building workshops regarding low-impact development, those types of items. And then, the master plan, again, are your goals and strategies to achieve them that would be presented and adopted by the board. So, that's what's currently as part of this action grant.
I think it's good to split them in one, in two different meetings.
So, yeah, I'll work with the PVPC staff on, you know, attending a planning board meeting in the future, whether that is the second April meeting or the first May meeting. We'll try to see if we can get them before the board at the first April meeting, because we don't, there's no public hearing items or no items on that agenda, to my knowledge.
Right.
Yeah, just A and Rs, if they pop up.
Yeah.
Yeah, possibly. Right.
So, you know, I can work with Kathy, I can work with the chair to get those on regular scheduled meetings.
Okay.
Those, those appearances.
Sounds fine with me.
Fine with me?
Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, close our planning board meeting.
Adjourned?
Adjourned.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's closed.